All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Thursday, October 19th, 2023. It's 7:30. This is the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals. And here tonight, we have our excellent administrative assistant, Chrissy Propry. We have sitting in, associate member who's sitting in to vote tonight, Michelle Uighar, Eric Son, Chair, and we have Jack Kelly, member. So with that, we will open the first, call the board and open the first hearing. Steve Mateos, 19 Independence Way West, Plum Island. The applicant is requesting a special permit finding to relieve from Section 97-4D5C2, upward extension of the Newbury zoning bylaws and any other permit relief as may be required under the Town of Newbury's zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use/ project. The lot consisted of a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling that was raised in order to construct a new single-family dwelling with an increased height on the property located at 19 Independence Way, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass. 01951. Accessors map U01, Lot 156. So is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Douglas DeShane here on behalf of Dr. Mateos. Before I start, so we have three members, meaning we need a majority, I mean, a unanimous decision.
Yes.
And I understand that. However, is there an opportunity, should it be needed, that the members who are not here tonight could, would, you know, read in under the Mullen Rule and be able to vote at the next hearing? Or, you know, at some point, would we not have more than four members in any event?
So we have three members.
Right.
Every decision is unanimous decision.
Okay.
We have, hopefully, two associates.
All right.
The associates sit in and have a voice in the discussion.
Right.
They, they may discuss a motion, but they don't make a motion and they don't vote on it.
Right, I'm sorry, I forgot you had a three-member voting board.
Yes.
Where you usually had four or five people. I was thinking it was a five-member. So we have a, not only we have a court, but this was what we would always have for a voting staff. Great, because I wouldn't want to not go forward.
And if this dragged out and others were here next, next meeting, they would have a voice, but they would not have a vote.
Have a vote.
And even if, even if they could watch the meeting and get in with the Mullen Rule, we have three voting members here who would be consistent with this.
Well, thank you for that clarification. As I said, Douglas DeShane from Finnern and Nicholson here, representing Dr. Mateos and his wife. I've actually, you know, for the first time, tried to put a PowerPoint up on the screen for the board. But in case I had technical difficulties or if you wanted a better view of the plans, I did provide you a copy of my presentation and the plans. And I do have extras. If anybody is here for this hearing, you're welcome to it, so you can follow along. Chrissy, could you just, thank you again, Douglas DeShane. Dr. Stephen Mateos is the owner. Eileen Graff from Graff Architects is here as our architect, and Timothy Meehan is our engineer. However, he is not here today. And unfortunately, my client couldn't be here today because he is actually in surgery this afternoon and early evening. So he couldn't make it, I apologize. I wanted to give a quick history of the project. Dr. Mateos purchased this property actually from the town of Newbury, having proposed to raise the existing structure and construct a new home. As I understand, it was a small cottage-style structure on the property which the town owned and sold. In the course of providing an elevation certificate for the town, for the conveyance, the surveyor, who happens to be our surveyor, Mr. Meehan, noticed a possible oil spill on the property, which was then investigated, and the town subsequently cleaned up the spill and, in doing so, removed the structure. So, before the conveyance. However, as determined by the building inspector, Dr. Mateos is eligible to reconstruct the pre-existing non-conforming house that existed, provided he obtains the special permit finding under Section 97-4D5C as stated earlier. And I believe we, go ahead.
Do you have a date of, when was the sale? Was it two years ago?
Yeah, just about. In fact, I provided you a copy of the building inspector's letter where he opined that, you know, the, the house was...
Perpetual.
You know, that we were eligible to apply for a special permit finding based on reconstruction of a pre-existing non-conforming home.
It looks like the deed was recorded on 6/25/2021.
Okay. What month was that?
June 25th, 2021.
So just, yeah, for the record, the part about a property being not used for two years with...
Right, abandonment.
Extension of, by the building inspector.
Yes.
For an additional year, if we're within the three-year period. And this was by the action of the town.
That, that was the basis for Vista Bennett's determination, yes.
So can I ask a question, counsel? Is that why we're going under 4D5C instead of 4D5B? It looks like we should be going under, are we going under catastrophe and demolition rebuilding as a matter of right?
No, no, we're going under finding for increase in height of a pre-existing non-conforming structure.
Okay, I'm a little confused, but I'll think about it.
No, I, I can understand the confusion. But as I understand, and again, as Mr. Bennett concluded after discussion with town council, given the, the fact that it was the town that took the house down prior to conveyance, that they've, you know, and they knew that he was going to do this, they've extended that, you know, that period. So it's not a, we're not coming in for a rebuild after a disaster. And technically, we're not coming in for, you know, new construction on a lot because of abandonment, but rather, we're relying on that existing, pre-existing non-conforming home that the, you know, that the town sold. And it was only because of the finding of the spill that they decided to take it down.
Thank you.
After the deal had been...
I had a question on which section two with this same discussion. So please proceed, I think we'll just, we'll just make sure we understand that.
Yeah, you could check with the building inspector, because I applied under the section that he determined in his determination letter. So again, Dr. Mateos is now proposing to construct a new three-bedroom home. The proposed project, as I said, is a redevelopment of a pre-existing non-conforming home. The good news is that the proposed structure will meet all dimensional requirements. All of the pre-existing non-conformities of the prior structure are being eliminated, and no new non-conformities are being proposed in any way. Nor are we asking to extend or, you know, change any non-comformities. In fact, we just eliminated them. Chrissy, if you can go to that next page, I'll explain that. So with respect to the lot, it is pre-existing non-conforming as it contains only 13,475 square feet of area, where, as we know, 40,000 square feet is now required. The lot, however, does conform to frontage requirements. It meets the frontage requirements, and we are proposing no changes to the lot. The structure, the pre-existing structure, was non-conforming as to required rear and side yard setbacks. And in fact, the rear setback was a negative 1.4 feet. This house actually encroached on the abutting property. The side yard setback, side A, was only at 9.8 feet. And so, as I said, we are proposing to redevelop the lot. And Chrissy, could you skip the conclusion page and we'll go to some plans? So this is the plan that the town commissioned in order to sell the property and it was, and, and, you know, get the, what did they call it, the elevation certification. And so you can see, we do have a certified plan that was done by the town establishing the pre-existing non-conforming structure and its, and its non-conformities. And again, as I said, this is, you can see from the picture, it jotted out into that little triangular area about a 1.4 feet, and it was only 9.8 feet from the side yard setback and the front, and... So what we're proposing to do, and if we could go to the next plan, and that's just a plan of the lot itself, the existing conditions of the lot. This was used to calculate lot coverages and to provide a plan for the conservation commission to show how we would be improving the lot from an environmental standpoint in constructing the home. The next plan is actually the proposed site plan. And I'll just point out some of the highlights for you. We are proposing, the house we are proposing will be, the lot coverage will be 15.4%, where, as you know, 20% is required. The height of the building, the original height, we estimate the architect, excuse me, the engineer, you know, we had pictures and things. So he had defined the height of the building at around 11-plus feet. We are proposing a height of 33.5 feet. The front yard setback, which was 20.3 feet, we slightly increased it to 20.8 feet, but in either event, it was conforming before and it's slightly more conforming now. Side A was 9.8 feet, which was non-conforming. We are now at 21.4 feet with a 10-foot requirement. So we're nearly double the requirement. Side B, we did have a 61-foot, a little over 61 feet of setback in the original building. We have cut that down to 25.6 feet. But again, it's a 10-foot setback, so we're more than two and a half times the requirement. And the rear, I think, is where we've made the most improvement, and that is we've gone from a negative 1.4 to 10.8, making us conforming to the 10-foot requirement. As far as parking goes, we have three spots within garage, garages. So we meet the two, two parking space requirement by, by an additional spot. But if you look, you can see they have a very large amount of what's proposed to be pervious parking area. I can't even begin to guess, but clearly, there's parking for at least another five or six cars without question. So no questions about parking. I mean, although it's not a conforming lot, I think, you know, we could agree that, you know, a nearly 14,000-square-foot lot is a good size for, for the area and for the PIOD in general. So there's plenty of room here, which is why we could easily meet all the dimensional setbacks, the FAR and the, and the lot coverage. In fact, I'm sorry I missed that, that was after parking. And that is, we are proposing a .24 FAR where .25 is required. So the development is going to actually do some, some real good, good things with respect to the environmental concerns and the lot itself. We're eliminating nearly 1,000 square feet of debris and piles of brush and, you know, sticks and a lot of other debris that's currently on the site, was on the site when we, when we purchased it. And I do want to point out that even though we qualify for lot coverage at 15.4%, nearly 1,000 feet of that is due to the fact that Sunset Drive actually has nearly 1,000 feet of pavement that comes onto the lot. So the road, which is supposed to run along the bottom of the picture there, they actually have about 1,000 feet of, of lot coverage. So the, the real lot coverage associated with the home and its amenities is actually well below the 15.4%. But because that pavement's there today, we need to comment, so we have. But we are proposing, in terms of environmental improvements, not only a removal of all these debris piles, but we are proposing to do some additional plantings and dune grass enhancements as part of what we will be proposing to the conservation commission. And net-net, I think the commission will be happy to see that, you know, we will be increasing, slightly increasing the vegetated cover and also, as I said, increasing the density of some of the dune grass. I do want to say that we did receive a comment from a neighbor about a concern over an existing cherry tree that is on, and if I could just approach, point it out to you, because it took me a while to find it. But the cherry tree in question that you may have seen is here. And the neighbor's concern was that when the, when the town took down the house, they, you know, they impacted some of this area of the dune here, and they're concerned that, you know, they don't have this cherry tree affected. They, they may have made an assumption that we were going to have some impact on that tree. But as you can see, it's, it's outside of our property. We don't intend to touch anything here, certainly not the tree. And my client's already indicated to me that in the context of, you know, revegetating some of these areas here, he's happy to talk with the neighbor about maybe, you know, addressing her concerns about the slope of this dune by putting in some, you know, some beech grass in there, some dune grass. But the one thing he wanted me to assure everyone is, that is not on the property, that's not going to be impacted whatsoever by this construction. And, but he is willing to work with them to maybe put some vegetation on that thing, on that dune, while he's doing his landscaping. So Dr. Mateos really, you know, does want to be a good neighbor. He's talked to his neighbors, he's gotten support from a number of them. But again, we did receive some comments from a couple of neighbors, and I'll just touch on those. I understand the Rosenthal's at 14 Independence sent him a letter wishing him the best of luck. Their only concern was about, you know, would this new structure have impacts to their views? And although they said, well, you know, the old house blocked our views too, might Dr. Mateos look at clearing some of the brush and trees down along Independence so that it opens their view shed? He certainly said he would consider that, but that will be dictated by the conservation commission. If they let us, you know, thin that out, we're happy to do it. But we also heard from the Romanos', they supported it and wished us luck. We did, you did receive two emails today or recently from, one from the Meleys. And their big concern was the cherry tree. They're the, the folks, they, they live on Jackson Way, but they have concerns about the cherry tree. And as I just explained, we would, we're not touching the cherry tree and we'll work with the neighbor to maybe support that dune. But the biggest proponent of the cherry tree was the Yoshidas. They're at 57 Sunset. And again, they had big concerns about the tree and made sure we weren't doing it, hurting it, or doing anything to undermine the dune on which it sits. And as I explained, we're not going to be in that dune, at least anywhere near the tree. But my client is willing to talk about putting some vegetation on his side of that, of that dune to support that, that tree. We're, we, you know, we like the tree too, and we'll do what we can to help. But it is not on our property, so that will have to be up to the Yoshidas. And then there was a question by one of the neighbors about where our parking would be in our lay-down area for the construction. As you can see, we have significant areas where we can park construction vehicles and, and as a lay-down area for materials. But Dr. Mateos also owns the property at 22 Independence, and he has significant area for parking, if he even needed it, you know, for his construction vehicles and whatnot. And it's a little ironic, because I guess the neighbor who was questioning where we were going to park had actually used Dr. Mateos' property at 22 Independence to park some of their construction vehicles when they were building on their house. So, you know, he helped them out, and he certainly has, I think, given them a good answer on, to assure them that he has plenty of parking for his, his own construction vehicles, which they should know as they had, you know, utilized his, his lot in the past. So I, I think for the most part, and then lastly, the folks just behind us, we just received an email at about quarter-five today. A woman owns two homes behind us, and she was concerned that we were going to have an impact on her views. Dr. Mateos, oh, and I can show you where that house is. The closer the houses is here, is here. And she's concerned about the impact of her views this way. However, the existing home that was here, although it was shorter, was also in a direct line of her home, which is, I believe, single-story. So granted, she's enjoyed some views since the house was taken down. But we, and while we will be going higher and having obviously some impact on her view shed, we are not interfering with her existing views, you know, to the side of the house, over here on, over Independence, or to this side as well. So, yeah, maybe a little interference straight on, but they still have views. And because our house meets the setbacks, their house meets the setbacks, I'm not sure whether that is a consideration in any event. So other than that, Dr. Mateos did meet with most of his other neighbors, not wanting to impose, he, you know, didn't ask them to come. But we, we have not had any other comments. I can run through the plans with you, if you'd like. And Eileen is here to, to comment if need be. But if we could just run through the slides really quickly, Chrissy, I appreciate it. So we have provided you first-floor plan, you know, all the proposed ground and first-floor plans, as well as A2, which is the, the third floor, second floor of living. And then we give you the roof plan. And we also included exterior elevations, which Eileen did. So if you have any questions about them, obviously, this house is going to be on pilings. And we'll be having, parking under, three spots under. And we are at a maximum height of 33.5. And then the last two plans are, are plans that we used for, I'm sorry. Yeah, the last two plans are the plans for the FAR calculations, which Eileen did. So if you have any questions about those, we're happy to answer them. But I have to say, I think, this is probably one of the most, or the, one of the cleanest projects with respect to a reconstruction that I've had the pleasure of dealing with, in that, you know, we are eliminating all non-conformities. The building meets all dimensional requirements, height, lot coverage, FAR. So in conclusion, and Chrissy, now if we could just kind of jump back up, I'm sorry, I should put that slide last. So in conclusion, you know, I would propose to the board that the development of the proposed home will not be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood or the PIOD, and that the new home will eliminate all non-conformities of the pre-existing structure while not extending or creating any new non-conformities. The proposed home will meet all dimensional requirements, including FAR and lot coverage and height, as required under the PIOD. The proposed home will meet all conservation requirements and will provide for enhancement of the dunes and protection of the existing vegetation. And as I said earlier, quite a bit of cleanup of the site to allow for the, for the dune grass and the other vegetation to prosper. The proposed home, we believe, will enhance the aesthetics and value of the slot, and in doing so, would enhance the aesthetics and the value of the surrounding neighborhood. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know, again, Eileen is here to help me out with any dimensional or architectural questions you might have, and I'm happy to answer anything I can, so.
Thank you for your presentation. All right, board members.
How many bedrooms were in the original house?
I believe three.
Do you have any documentation towards that, or?
I looked on the assessor sheet, it was blank for bedrooms. It looks pretty small for three. I was going to guess one.
Yeah, that's just, I guess, in question related to how you're filing for the project. As a, you know, normally, as a reconstruction, there would be one additional bedroom, right? So I'm just wondering, how many were in the original house?
I can verify that file.
And then on the, at the, at grade, it looks like what's calling the garages. So they're open in the front, no garage doors?
No.
But they're closed solid in the back?
So there is skirting that is going to happen, but meeting the requirements for conservation. So they're going to be held off from ground above 2 foot 6.
Okay, but if I'm, if I'm standing in front of it, I'm looking at a solid wall. It's not, it's not continuous, continuously open?
That's correct.
When you say skirting, you meant, it's porous, it's perforated, it's like glass, right? Or is it, because this looks like it's raised, it looks like it's raised up.
If, correct, it is the bottom, when I said, apologies. When I say skirting, it's anything below the steel structure. And by that, it's solid, it is a frame wall, just to give dune protection, some form of sort of enclosure. There are some openings on the backside, I apologize, on, on one bay, just again to have some of that light coming into the space. But there's no lower, any, there's no, nothing blocking anything below 2 foot 6. And that's, that's...
So these are all, these are all open?
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand that. I was, but, you know, all the openings for the garage, you know, there's no garage door. That's open, but it's not open on the opposite side.
Only one?
You wouldn't be able to see through it, you know, if I was standing next to the house, I wouldn't be able to see through.
Right, and that would be the case for the one. If you look at the rear elevation, there is one that is going to be open through.
I think, for right now, that was the only question that I had.
All right, Jack?
Just to be clear, the good news is, in my three years here, this is the first project I've seen that doesn't require setback variances or height variance, so that's no interest. Like Michelle, I'm hung up on the bedrooms a little. I'm looking at them, and it looks like you're proposing three.
Yes.
But I think we could easily count four, and we might get to five, depending on how we are, how we're counting them. On the first floor, we have two bedrooms, roughly 10 by 12 each. On the second floor, we have a master bedroom, that's what's bringing us. And adjacent to that, we have a walk-in closet with two windows, a door to a hall. I mean, it, it looks like a bedroom, it seems like it might feel like a bedroom. Not sure how that one's not a bedroom. And adjacent to that, if you were being in a notorious mood, you might, you might stick your mother-in-law or somebody in there, because it's kind of a small room too. So how are those, how are those two walk-in closets, especially the larger one, which is 20, 30% larger than the bedrooms downstairs? How are those not, how's that not a bedroom? May not be, I'm just, I'm just looking at you.
Correct. So this is, this is for Steve and Regina, and these are the requests that they had, an opportunity to build new construction. And currently, in their house now, they're very limited in closet space. And so those two rooms were literally how much space they would like to have for their clothing storage. So while that, what I was going to say is, it, it's not, it could have, I don't disagree with you, this could have the appearance, scale-wise, that it's bigger than a lot of bedrooms on Plum Island. But the reality is, due to the scale of their lot, they would like these types of... But the reality is, due to the scale of their lot, they would like these types of spaces to help support a living situation that they don't presently have in their house. So, it truly, the top floor is the primary suite.
Yeah, I was going to say, you know, in my discussions with Dr. Mateos, this is their, you know, forever home. You can see he's proposed a pretty significant gym and sauna room, and, you know, that whole top floor has essentially been designed to be just their master living space. And in fact, I agree with you, they've kind of, they've kind of taken their guest bedrooms, which are downstairs, and they've made them pretty small in comparison to the, you know, what they've decided on top. So, I, again, I, again, I've just, clearly the gym and some of this, and the exorbitant size of the, of the closets is just their personal wish for their, you know, forever home. And I don't know, and, but I can see your concern. Is there certainly deed restrictions or something else that I think, I'm sure they would be willing to offer up to make sure those rooms are?
In the past, when we questioned this, there have been certain proposed plans that certainly go a long way to suggesting a hot plate makes it an associate apartment kind of thing. We have in the past, and have had clarification from town council, that we are to, to review and to take what is presented to us. If it is not presented and is not clear, clearly defined, then we have every right to question the intent. For other, you know, there, it's a gym, there's, there's equipment laid out, there's a sauna, he's got mirrors on the wall, there's a TV, there's intent of exactly what the use is. There is not a second supporting bathroom that's adjacent and has a door into the gym, which then might cause concern of putting a bed in there and all of a sudden makes it a bedroom.
Right.
So, in terms of how it's drawn, how it's labeled, and how it's being presented, it does appear to me that it is what it is.
Though it does have a door into a bathroom.
Not directly from, like, the gym.
Oh, not from the gym, excuse me, I'm talking about the larger walk-in closet.
Yeah, understood.
Which, which is acceptable. I'm, I'm, I'm just, I guess there are two issues that I'd like to see clarified. How many bedrooms were allowed under the one-bedroom-over-existing rule? And how many bedrooms we're counting here? I guess that's one of the questions.
And again, I, I would have to talk with my client, but I, I'm sure if, and I've done this in not necessarily projects here, but in other projects, I, I'm sure they're willing to propose a deed restriction that, that says that this is it. You know, they only have three bedrooms, and they can't convert any bedroom, any of these rooms to bedrooms. And, you know, in selling the home, you know, a buyer would look at that and say, geez, you know, you, you have four bedrooms here, how did that happen? So, it's just an additional assurance to the, to the town that.
I don't, I don't know if deed restriction does, does anything, or we really would need to go that far.
Okay.
We have a plan, the building inspector is the enforcer to make sure that this plan gets built. If, if on other projects where we have three rooms, and there's an exact same room, and it has a closet, and, you know, it's missing a door, someone could go by a Home Depot door and turn it into a bedroom instantly. This, this doesn't appear to be the case with the build-ins and everything else that's going on.
Very good.
So, I do think for the record, because it is a concern, you had the previous height, but somewhere it's not listed what the previous number of bedrooms are, you get from two to three. And they certainly could have three if there were two existing bedrooms.
I'm reading, I'm sorry. Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry, I just, Aileen actually reached out to Dr. Mateos' wife, I believe, and I was incorrect, there were not three bedrooms in the existing home, it was two.
Okay.
It was two. So we can, again, get you clarification on that, but if, you know, it's at least two.
Okay.
Sounds like we buried this issue.
Yep. Just to go back for the, for the record, in terms of the 97-4D, 5D special permit, alteration, reconstruction, extension, or change of such a structure as to the extent, other than authorized by sect, the section above, which is as by right, in which it's not to increase the footprint or increase the height. On a finding of a board, that such alterations, reconstructions, extensions, or change shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood or PIOD. So, we are taking into consideration, per the building inspector, that the property was being sold with an existing structure that gave the property existing rights, that upon the finding of hazardous leak, the building inspector ordered it to be taken down. And then we have in past, in recent hearings, have had similar condition where a structure was taken down on a piece of property, and by directive of the building inspector, and those rights for that existing structure, non-conforming structure, were retained.
Here it is, remember, I'll try to call.
Yes. So, and after reading the catastrophe or demolition, even if you had owned the property and you decided to demolish the house on your own, under Section F, under, so as to exceed the total volume and height, you would still meet the requirements under the, the sections, and that one section has, such structure shall not be rebuilt more than two years after such a finding, such period may be extended for one year for good cause. If the building inspector wrote the order to take it down, and you're within that three year time, he would, he would meet that requirement.
I think that's why he wrote that letter.
So, a little debate between D and F, I don't, it's really, there is no difference in terms of the outcome? Can I answer your question?
Yes.
The ground floor plan in the garage, is it paved? Is it, is it sand? Is it just gravel?
I believe it's sand.
I, I believe it has to be.
Yeah.
They won't allow you to pave on the flood.
Well, definitely not paved, I just didn't know if he was continuing the proposed stone or shell, which is probably hazardous driveway. I believe it's sand, actually.
Has this gone to CONCOM?
Nope, we're, we wanted to make sure we had a project before we did. But we're all prepared to file with them, and we're going to be on the November?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one Conservation Commission.
Okay. And so what?
Yeah, I guess I, I would sort of love if the ground floor was a little bit more visually open. I like that the one bay is open. You know, it's a, it's a pretty large building, you know, it's, it's a larger site than many we see on Plum Island often, at least here in this room. So, that's good. But it, you know, the, I'm calling it the back elevation, but, you know, it's, it's a bit solid. I appreciate, at least though, you know, there's a lot of windows, which helps with the massing, and also, you know, changing orientation of the plating, which they also to just give it, you know, not quite such a massive feel. But it, it's a little solid, I guess, along the back, in terms of, you know, neighboring around to maybe had a little bit more light, you know, and views in the past. I guess that's just a comment.
The, and CONCOM will determine that this meets the requirements for the flood zone that it's in, and that the treatment of the ground floor plane and the present openness and the destruction type all meet, meet that.
Yep, the sand flow and the, yeah, that's why that two, two and a half feet is completely open around the entire structure.
The, I have one last question, which is, is the screened-in porch included in the FAR calculation?
Yes, it is.
It is. Okay. I'll also say that I quickly measured the ground floor plan, and was, I don't know, 100 by 15 feet for quick measurement. I also measured the FAR of the, of the first floor, and was in four, was in, within four feet of the measure. So, I love that. Okay, so with that, I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak for the project. Seeing none, I'll ask to see, you'd like to speak for?
Yes, I'm Julia Yoshida. I am the person who lives and owns part of the land on which the previous building was built. I'm a retired physician. I attribute to the same medical school as Doug Mateos. I'm an artist, I'm a landscape artist currently. I moved to Plum Island 16 years ago because I was attracted to the natural beauty of the area. And everybody knows that Parker River National Wildlife Refuge is known worldwide as a premier location to see natural growth, plants, et cetera. I wanted to be there to listen, to see wildlife, and fewer people, and fewer large homes. I have a large number of friends who do the same, who feel the same. One who goes to the refuge daily, you probably know who he is. This will make a physical presence that really changes what we see when we drive toward the refuge. And these people who come to the refuge bring their money. It's three times the footprint of the previous building, and three times the height of the previous building. So, it's something, you're, you're making a big change. It is going to change a number of things. I don't have to outline that for you, you realize that. And I also want to tell you that my comment about, in my letter, was not about the tree, it was about the dune. And that is an issue, because this is on secondary dunes, the whole island. It's a very large and tall dune. So what is done there should be of concern to the Conservation Commission. It is not only a matter of planting grass. I'm a biologist also, that was my training and my education before medical school. So, it's a big concern and a big step. By the way, Dr. Mateos did not contact me at all about these plans. So that's another clarification. I think, I hope, and I trust you all, to make the right decision, because it's not only one home that is the issue here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chrissy, did you, did you get name and address?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? No?
Who's listening?
Okay.
If I could just address through you, Ms. Tim, and one of the comments, and I'm sorry if I misspoke. What I said was that we did receive your letter, we did, I did understand that your concern was partially for the health and well-being of the tree, but you were concerned about the side of that dune that had been cleared by the town and its, you know, engineers when they took the house down. And what I said is that Dr. Mateos would be willing to work with you when he's doing his enhanced landscaping, to see what could be done on the, that dune, which is on your, you know, that slope of your property. So no, I didn't mean to imply that he had talked to you about it, I, what I committed to was that he would talk to you about what we, you could both do cooperatively to make that side of the dune that was disrupted when the house was taken down, you know, better vegetated, so that it would become better protected.
I would be open to comments from the Conservation Commission, who know more about dune protection on Plum Island.
Sure.
And the other thing is, when you said something about clearing the land, when I first bought the house, I was told that there should be no net takeout of organic material. So you can't just clear things and take out that material, because it's biologic material.
No.
It has to be left there.
I understand that, and if I could, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned, we will be before the Conservation Commission on the 21st, and we will be discussing with them what they're going to allow us to do. But what I was referring to, and maybe you have a better understanding than I, but there are some debris piles. You know, there's debris piles out there.
What is the debris? Is it hard material or just organic matter? Organic matter?
It's not living organic matter.
Well, it's, yeah, but it becomes soil, you know. So, like, my, my point is, I'm.
There's concrete blocks and building material. That's the, when I say debris, that's what we're going to take out.
Yeah.
You are correct, the Conservation Commission is not going to let us clear vegetation. No. And we're not proposing. I, I think you'll find when we go to the Conservation, we really are proposing an enhancement, and, let's call it a cleanup of the debris, the bricks and the whatever, concrete blocks, and we are proposing enhanced vegetation, including the, the dune that you are concerned about.
But I think it should be the members of the Conservation Commission who advise both of us, Steven and me, about how to plan, not me.
Yeah, not only will they advise us, they're going to tell us.
Yes, exactly.
Right, the, the, we're the zoning board of appeals, we are not the Conservation Commission. We, if something is extremely glaring and obvious, we, we will call it out, or discuss it, or ask that the applicant change something, but it's got to be glaring. Otherwise, the, we, in any motion or decision that we make that is approved, has a condition that it must meet the CONCOM. And so they, they have to go to the CONCOM. The second part of that is any, the second condition following that is if there's any changes whatsoever to what was presented to us, and CONCOM directs the change, they have to come back to us. So, our, our purview is not the, the, is not, you know, we're not trying to do the CONCOM's job, and we're not trying to give any approval or direction other than the zoning board of appeals. Like I said, unless it's, it's totally glaring, then, then it would behoove the applicant to, to propose a change, because it's not going to get by us before it gets to the CONCOM. I do appreciate your love of Plum Island and your concerns for Plum Island, and the PIOD is here to help fix some of the, the small lots on Plum Island in terms of allowing owners' rights to develop property within, within certain dimensional criteria, which is different than the rest of the bylaws for the rest of town. And in, in someone presenting this, we, unless it's outside the bounds of the dimensional metric, and it is grossly non-conforming to the neighborhood, they have every right to, to build this as you would have the exact same rights, and then other neighbors would have the same rights, with, the key dependent is the size of the lot, obviously. The building has to fit within the setbacks. Existing structures do allow, existing structure, non-conforming structures on an, on an existing lot carry with them the, the right in which to rebuild or quote alter, and because that's the difference of, of, of some of the sections of alteration and reconstruction. So, if they had the existing house, and it was only five feet from the property line, and the house was existing, they may rebuild. and the house was existing, they may rebuild and use that as an existing, well, existing and rebuild on that five-foot line. And we deal with that, and we do ask applicants to improve, and even as best they can, do better to improve upon what they're proposing. So when you have a structure that meets all the dimensional requirements, it's hard to find a means of which to deny the proposal. If it's, if it's within all the bounds, there are, if this was totally enclosed at the base and it didn't have a pitched roof that allowed some light and air to get around it, and it was like a flat roof, we'd be having a different discussion about the mass and the size of the house. It's, it is slightly below, but it is below the maximum height, and it is below the maximum FAR. So, the Mateos haven't taken this, and we have had other owners or quote developers that would come in and start and figure out what the maximum square footage is and build the structure to the max, thinking that they're, they're getting the most value out of the property, which in some sense, they're building to the max, but they're not, per your view, not ingrained in the keeping of what the essence of Plum Island is all about. So, in terms of this building and meeting the front plane and having gravel and not a paved driveway, they are taking the steps, and they have hired a professional architect to do their plans. To me, without, you know, the opinions of others just yet, the house presented is in keeping with the bylaws that we have.
I understand that. Is there any room for style?
We, in the town of Newbury, meaning all of us who live here, have not adopted and gone that far in the bylaws to create any kind of design criteria. We, we can comment if we think that the design is oversized or over, over-enhanced or in being detrimental to light and to air and to, we really don't have anything that says that blocking a view is, is anything in the bylaw. If you own the property, then you have the view. If somebody owns the property next to you, they don't quite have that view if you build within the rights. If you build outside the rights or you're exacerbating the requirements of the bylaw, then, then we can comment on it. We do sometimes make comments to try to improve, but in terms of design, we really don't have a voice. We could, we could propose comments, but it's, it's not something that we can dictate. If, you know, we hope we're all living in Newbury, that if you did have concerns, that you reach out to the Mateos and ask them to present or, you know, present more of a plan or colors or something like that. And certainly, going to the COMCOM and what happens at COMCOM's discussion is their, is their purview and expertise to handle. So, do you have any more?
Thank you.
Questions or comments? Okay. So with that, I think we're going to close the public hearing. And what that means is that we're not, we're closed the discussion and we're closed to receiving any new information. I would propose a motion for one of the board members, and then with that motion, let's make sure that any conditions are clearly listed in order to control the review of COMCOM, which is our standard language, and ask for the condition that the number of existing bedrooms be presented back to us. Makes sense?
Yeah. Any other conditions besides those two, Mr. Chairman?
COMCOM's going to handle the ground floor plan, I asked. COMCOM's going to handle the dune and the site issue. The grading on the existing plan and the grading on the new proposed plan in terms of that corner of the property are almost exactly the same and untouched, so I don't, like I said, if it was wildly changed and we could see that change, we might say something about that. I would say that the condition of the bedroom, bedrooms existing to new, and our standard language that says if anything changes by COMCOM dictating something a little different, then a new set of plans and elevations need to come back before the board to be reviewed. So is there a motion?
Can I make a motion? Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the project as proposed and the plans that we've received, with a couple of conditions. Obviously, it has to go through a review of COMCOM, and also for the applicant to confirm the number of bedrooms in the original house that's since been demolished.
Okay.
Anyone else second?
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I second. All right, fellows in favor?
Aye.
So, this will be drafted. We will review the draft to sign at the next meeting. We will expect that the confirmations of the bedrooms comes in and is delivered to Chrissy and then is delivered to us before the next meeting. And we must have that in hand if any action's going to be taken on the draft of the decision.
Understood, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. That's what we have.
Well, thank you very much for your time, and I assure you that my clients will, will meet with you on the conservation issues, and we will be before them soon. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Julie, did you get a copy of any drawings? Do you want any? Draw any digits?
Draw. Okay. Thank you.
This, that's the new one. Yeah. And, I, this is just a survey of the existing house. I'm going to try to recite the papers too much.
I heard.
Okay. We're all Newbury people here.
Right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
It's a big lot. It has 40,000 square miles. It wouldn't want to come at all. Right, there was a lot of people in the neighborhood.
Correct, yes.
Which is why, because they can miss one compared to our last one.
All right, we've got another. Yeah, it's fairly clean cut, and they have an architectural set of plans, they have three site plans.
Well, yeah. Like you said, there's really nothing to, I mean, that's not true.
Okay, public hearing continued. Brian and Helen, who we have, 134 Northern Boulevard, Plum Island. The applicant is requesting a special permit slash finding for relief from section 97-4 D 5 2, 5 C 2, sorry about that, upward extension, and from relief from 97-4 D 4 A, change of use of the Newbury zoning bylaws and of any other permit relief as may be required under the town of Newbury zoning bylaws to allow the proposed use slash project in order to alter slash renovate the pre-existing commercial restaurant store into a single-family dwelling with an increase in height but within conformance on the property lot at 134 Northern Boulevard, Plum Island, Newbury, Mass. 01951, assessors map U 04, Lot 139. Continued public hearing from September 14th, 2003. Review and discussion on draft decision for the project. All right. So, Chrissy has meticulously drafted up the decision.
This one was tough because this is the first special permit we've denied since we drafted the decision. So all the language was for an approved project. So it gets messy towards the end.
So...
And, we had a scheduled meeting on September 6th that we didn't have quorum for, that Mario and I came over, so I didn't know if I should add that hearing to the main body. When we say hearings, July 20th, August 17th?
Yes.
Okay.
So, let's, let's jump into that, and I wouldn't say we changed, I'd say we updated the decisions to be more in keeping with current legal documentation and recording purposes, where we were a little skinny in a one-pager before. We've, we've provided more of the record, some of the discussion, and clearly outlined the requirements and conditions for the betterment of the town and for the applicants and for the residents.
And I think go for modification.
Yes. So...
Wait, one more thing on that note, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I attended the second meeting, I did not attend the first, and Mario was the voting member. So, do we need a quorum tonight to do what we do, because we don't really have two of us?
Aye.
That's right.
So, we can review it. We value your input. We can't vote on it with Mario. And going to the new format, we do, as part of making the decision, the decision should come out as, I make a motion to have a decision for a special permit be drafted. So, the language of being drafted means it's not, in the past, we would make a motion, the motion was then granted, the motion was written up, it went to the board, people would review and sign it, and we were done. We, with the longer format and the more information that is contained, we are in the process of making a motion to draft a favorable decision or to draft a decision, and then once the decision is drafted, it is then voted.
Yeah, I missed that up.
No, it's okay. Just I seen, you know, 10 years ago, my first one was pretty, I was put on the spot by Howie. Okay, so, let's just go through the procedural history. I think here, Chrissy, you mentioned that if there was a meeting and it was, it was posted, and it, and we got here and someone didn't show up and we had to do something different, you've got to list it.
Okay, okay, all right.
It's time-sensitive because people, people may have shown up and they want to see how this got from one meeting to the next.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't have, I didn't have any comments on procedural history, but I did miss that meeting. We've got the fact that they submitted something and that they came back with a revised package because we had made some comments, and they, they considered it and revised the package, so that's there.
They listed everything as revised. And then they came back the last meeting with that analysis, so I added that as supplemental also.
Correct, and they did not have any photos, those were my photos I was looking at. Okay? All right, anybody on section two?
No, but I haven't looked super close at this yet.
Section three.
The change of use is from restaurant to residential, correct?
Yes. Good. Do we know that it was always built, that it was originally residential? Are you conjecturing that it was residential and that it was made commercial and then?
I just assumed it was resi. I assumed the whole island started off as resi.
But it was a, it was a catering company before it became a restaurant, and, and they made some modifications.
I can check what Jason, the assessor, what it was when it was first built, or what the status was.
Is it a store, a commercial store?
It was.
Or, it's not a restaurant? Oh.
No, I guess it was a store.
Store, my mistake, yes.
No, there's, there's seats like it's a restaurant. It's like it was takeout, food service, but I think it was just the catering at one time, then it went to food service, where you could sit there, and then, and certainly they were proposing to bring it back to a single-family dwelling.
Yeah, somebody just says, "commercial store slash restaurant."
Yeah, the use of, change of use is the big, is the big issue.
Help me out with the wording here on the specific findings. C says, "In making this request, the applicant's positive default line, blah, blah, blah. But by the time we get to three, it says, 'The proposed construction will be significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood.'" I kind of doubt the applicant's positive there.
Well, this is where it gets more complicated because it's a denial.
There may be a finding that we found, but I doubt they argue that their contract is going to be more detrimental. Although I agree with you.
It's that funny word, "poisted."
Was it "poisted" or "positive"? I thought it was.
Whatever, it's a funny word. All right, so three needs to be edited.
And four also, I think, possibly, well...
Yes, that, that was me.
So it's, it's the applicant, as Jack had pointed out, making, "In making this request, the applicant said the following."
Okay.
"The proposed construction will not be more significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood and Plum Island community as a whole. The proposed change of use and reconstruction of the single-family dwelling on the lot with an increased height is considered to be..." Considered to be...
It's almost like you ought to stop after number two, or the first two were the applicants. I think the remaining three might be the board.
The board, yeah.
No, I, I think it's just written, they, they, they propose that the lot with the increase in height is considered to be within...
Oh, good, then let's say that, yeah, agreed.
To be, to be in keeping with, because they did, with the neighborhood. Keeping with the neighborhood, period. The proposed project will increase... The proposed project will increase, they said improved value, the tax revenue of the town with the change from commercial to an improved or enlarged, improved resident, improved residential. They request a special permit, so take out five.
Yeah.
Five is on there. Okay.
Yeah, but Jack, I see what you're saying.
It's okay.
Yeah, it's under the category, it's like that first line at C, that's saying, these are all subsets under C, right?
Right, these are my arguments.
But these actually aren't all the arguments of applicants, some of that if that was ours.
Right, but Eric edited, so he stated the applicant's arguments, I think.
They made a heck of a pitch for what they were doing and so.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. Yeah, I agree, yeah.
So this, right, and this is stating what they were seeking.
Yeah.
Then we get to the decision. "In review of the foregoing, the zoning board made a motion by Mario Connavalli to deny the special permit application based upon the information submitted. The purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, P I O D, as the, as the project as proposed is deemed more detrimental to the neighborhood, period. The proposed increase in, increase in height has set forth in the Newbury zoning bylaws and zoning provisions governing the Plum Island. The proposed, this would be, although the proposed increase in height has set forth in the Newbury zoning bylaws and zoning provisions governing Plum Island is met, the zoning board finds that the scale and massing of the proposed house or dwelling, what do we call it, structure, is denied as the proposed project is, is not in keeping with the adjacent surrounding neighborhood."
Fix massing, we don't like massing. Size and, and massiveness or something, I, we said the word massive a lot at the meeting, but I don't like massive.
Well, it came specifically. "The purpose and intent of the bylaws to promote the health and safety and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Newbury, including without limitation to conserve health, to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers, to provide adequate light, air, and to prevent overcrowding of land, to avoid undue concentration of population, to encourage housing for persons of all income levels, to facilitate adequate provisions of transportation, water supply, drainage, sewer, schools, parks, open space, and other public requirements, and to conserve the value of the land and buildings, including the conservation of natural resources, and prevent the blight, pollution of the environment, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town, and to preserve the increased amenities by the proclamation of regulations, regulations to fulfill said objectives." So that's the, the first part, and, and the overall view is the concentration and density from Article One of the general provisions. Then you get to the P I O D itself, which says, similar, if not the same, "The purpose to reduce damage to public and private property resulting from floodwaters, ensure public safety by reducing threats to life and personal injuries, eliminate costs associated with the response and cleanup of flooding conditions to preserve open space, and limit the expansion of non-conforming, single- and two-family structures so as not, so as to prevent the exacerbation of existing problems with density and intensity of use." So if, if you are taking something that is already oversized and slightly reducing it, but still having it being oversized, and you are exacerbating the density and intensity of use, and compare to the adjacent surrounding neighborhood, the structure with, with the three stories, with the solid three stories and the flat roof, had added height and density to what was proposed.
Right, so why didn't you say that instead of saying massing, saying that we added density and intensity of use, then that comes straight from the bylaw.
Yes, yes, I did, I did say that. I, I will go back and watch the video and recap my words to be more exact, but that, that is the, that, that line of.
I'm trying to jam you up, I just thought the word massing was inappropriate.
No.
It didn't, it didn't flow properly, I was at.
Well, I had edited the first two sentences and the second sentence I didn't, the third sentence I didn't get to. "The zoning board, for the finding of special permit to be denied for the project, as shown on the above-mentioned plans, as it would be substantially detrimental to the public good, and that the requested relief cannot be granted as it would be substantially dererred in dererget from the intent or purpose of the Newbury zoning bylaws." Okay, so I, I guess the first paragraph needs to be simplified but more direct. "Special permit is designed and the applicant has filed a special permit with a certification of town clerk." So remember.
So how about this, I'm trying to hear your words, "As it would cause substantial detriment by exacerbating the existing problems with density and intensity of use."
Say that again.
By exacerbating the existing problems with density and intensity of use. Substantial detriment by exacerbating. That says, like you said, that says massive without saying massing.
Yeah, that, that comes right out of the.
They like that, the judges like that.
If, if the special permit is denied, it is recorded with the town clerk. It's not recorded.
Okay.
Because they don't want it on their deed. You don't record something that doesn't, doesn't happen. So special permit is designed, the applicant is denied. Is denied.
Maybe just period. Have you got something to add?
No, it is denied and is filed with certification from the town clerk. Because the town clerk has to stamp it in and, and that's where it legally gets recorded and gets filed. Nothing is actually ever received unless the town clerk receives it.
Perfect, and that follows up on the next paragraph.
And the next one is correct. All right, so the rest is pretty good. So I think.
Okay.
The, the decision as to what the intended purpose was, what the, what the main conclusion is and why that conclusion is not appropriate are the three things that need to be covered in the first paragraph. I think I have the first sentence, Jack has the, the last sentence and, and something about the understanding of what was presented needs to be drafted in the middle. And that's one sentence to basically sum up the whole back and forth discussion that we had about the, the height and about the, the specific location in the neighborhood and what that one building design at that exact location meant.
You think that'll stick out, which it did.
Yeah, and, and obviously if it was built somewhere else and it was built on a different site and, you know, it possibly, it possibly could be built somewhere else, but that, that's, that's different. And sometimes you'll, you think you like to talk to people and say, "If you really like to do that, just buy a bigger site and you get everything you want." So it's a little, it does come down to lot size, it does come down to existing and what they're claiming to reuse by right for existing conditions, and the fact that it's, it's grossly oversized to the metrics, even though it exists, it was existing, it would be less detrimental at the same size in the existing form that it is there now.
Than one story.
Than it would be if that one story was then raised to conceivably three stories with a flat roof, which just raises the height and the shape and the, and the mass of the house. And, you know, people that have submitted sloping roofs with, with no deck on top, there's less, there's just less volume and, and the light and the air is what we're trying to assess. And certainly, you know, I don't know if they got up or they flew a drone, but if, you know, some people's intent is they're trying to get to see the sea and that's, there's value there, but on the other hand, they're, they're, when you look at the properties adjacent and right across the street, there are a story, a story and a half.
Right.
No more than two with small, shallow sloping roofs.
Direct neighbors, sir.
Correct, and so that, that is the essence of the finding, and then your sentence would be the reasoning as to why. So I'd, I'd propose that I take a moment, try to bang out the paragraph and send it to you.
I, I appreciate that.
Okay. If Martha then reviews it.
She will, yeah.
Martha then can consider if she would like to send it to Mario and to Michelle for their separate purview. Any discussions you have, you have to have with Martha.
Yeah.
Martha and you, Chrissy, can then compile thoughts and propose the decision for review and hopefully approval next time. Are we under a time restraint here?
No. No, because we wrote the decision in the required amount of time from the meeting, just has to be drafted, written.
Okay. And this, if I didn't do it, the, obviously now the public meeting is closed.
Mm-hmm.
I think on some decisions, it's wise to leave it open because we're just not sure where things are going. And, and by keeping it open, we're keeping the, we're, we're allowing the applicant and we're allowing the public to present and discuss as we get to this point, even if they were here, they could be part of the conversation. If I close the meeting, that's it, they can sit and watch, but there's no comments, there's no more paper, there's no more, "Oh, I got one more thing to show you." Meeting's closed. That way, if someone is here and the meeting is closed and they walk out of the room, someone can't come up with a new piece of paper that we review and then they, they're like, "Where, where did that come from?"
Right.
So sometimes I have forgotten in the heat of the moment to say that, other times it seems beneficial just to keep it open as long as possible.
So you're closing it now.
I'm closing it now for the record and we'll, we can just say that the public, the public hearing is closed and discussion.
Applicants, I'm sorry. The applicants have asked for a copy of the meeting minutes, and I told them that I've drafted them, not completely, but almost done. I wanted them half-ready for tonight, but I don't. So I will present them at the next meeting for review. A summary of the three months of meetings. And I told them after they are blessed by the board, then I can upload them to the website and, and let them view them.
So we had a discussion previously with town council where Chrissy had older notes that didn't quite make it to printed copy, and the fact that she takes notes on the meeting, her notes are, are public and therefore xeroxing those, her hand notes and distributing them as part of the public record are acceptable. Stamp is drafted. Your notebook or my notebook, where I'm taking specific notes for myself and I'm figuring things out, doing little calculations and stuff like that, if I'm not sharing my notebook with you, it's not public record.
So we talked about the.
So just to be clear on what is kept and what is not and what is being asked, and it, it is appropriate that if you did calculations on, on this project and wanted to say, I'm a little bit disagreement, I, I did my own calculations and I'm in disagreement, I'd like to add these to the record certainly, but, but then they're part of the public record. So just, just trying to be clear, this is the only chance we get to make sure we're on the same page and advancing ourselves here. Okay, so that's the process, we're drafted up, I'll communicate with you, Chrissy.
Okay.
If you would have Martha check it. Martha deems it's appropriate, has comments. If Martha would, would then send it to all of us separately and receive any comments back separately, then with Martha's guidance, you can compile and we will have a draft, hopefully a final draft to go, and it will have gone through, you know, your, your office and it won't be any debate between us. Okay. All righty. Is there a motion to close the meeting, end the meeting?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're off to.